Call this meeting in the public city council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brew Baker?
Here.
Lucas?
Here.
Jeffrey?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Kimmons?
If there's anyone here that would like to address the city council tonight, please go out the green card located in the foyer and present it to the clerk. You will have four minutes to address the council at the appropriate part of the meeting. Regards to the agenda, you all should have received an agenda in your packets. Are there any corrections or changes to tonight's agenda? No, sir. Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. The minutes from the last council meeting were also included in your packets. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Michael, if I understand, you have a presentation to make.
I do, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have the pleasure today to recognize two of our outgoing members of the city council, Mr. Tim Brewbaker and Mr. Jerry Jeffrey. They've been with our council for quite some time. Jerry started in 2015 and Tim in 2017. I moved to Moberly in 2016, so Jerry's been here as long as I've been in town and Tim shortly thereafter. And I think I speak for many of us when I say it's difficult for us to imagine this without them, but we wish them good fortune as they move forward. You know, I was just reflecting a little bit today and when I was thinking about what I was going to miss most about the two of you. You know, with Jerry, I think what I've always respected most about you, Jerry, is your fearlessness. There's never been an issue that you're afraid to tackle or talk about or ask the tough questions. And Tim, with you, I think, I know it sounds silly, but your ability to always bring levity to the situation and diffuse the room and always have the ability to make us laugh even sometimes when the conversations get tense and I, our room will definitely miss the both of you, so. Our mayor pro tem wanted to add a few words today.
I did. I wanted to just take a second and a lot of people don't realize, you know, how thankless of a job this is sometimes. It doesn't pay anything and it it takes an awful lot of time, but there's a lot of rewards to that. And these two have put in a lot of time, a lot of effort. You won't find two people with two bigger hearts than these two gentlemen right here. And I probably can't find too many people that I have more respect for than you two gentlemen. And I think one of the things, you know, you can judge this position by what's happened and, you know, everything that's been successful, but I think you're leaving it a lot better than when you got it. And I think that's a true sign of success. And I think you're leaving it in good hands with the two new council members that we have coming in. And I would just like to thank you guys for your dedication and your commitment to Moberly over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I would ask the mayor pro tem to join me in presentation of the plaques and we'll do Mayor Brewbaker first and we'll take a photo.
We going outside or?
Sorry.
It didn't work out that way.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to open the floor to you and Councilman Jeffrey if you have any parting words for everybody.
Go ahead and go first. Well, first, I appreciate you spelling my name right on the plaque. Got a quick story. I was president of Rotary one year or a couple of years and the person in charge of the plaques that year misspelled my name. And I thought, well, it was ironic. He was a superintendent of schools. And I got it home and I looked at it. And it's still on my wall, but it kind of confuses my grandkids a little bit how it spelled my name. But anyway, thank you very much. I've really enjoyed being on the city council. You know, coming from a banking background for 37 years, it's been really interesting to see how the city operates and and it was really good to meet the city staff. You know, the staff here is great. And recently, we hired Michael, which I think was a great hire. And, you know, time will tell, I guess, Michael, but I do have a lot of confidence in him and the rest of the staff, though. If he just uses his staff, their skill levels are just tremendous. They know what they're doing. And I know their supporting staff do too. But anyway, thank you very much for letting me be on the city council. I really appreciate it. And then I know my wife has really appreciated it because I've been gone a lot, so I'm not sure what I'm going to do now. But anyway, Jerry, you got something to say?
Yeah, I know you have a meeting, so I'll make it brief, but I do want to thank all the staff, the city staff, that I've had a pleasure to work with over the last nine years. It has been a learning experience, but certainly a couple of people that played a big role helped me a lot. First of all, surely only when I was the mayor. There's no way I would have gotten that done without her special help. And then Shannon Hance, also the clerk, the city, special appreciation to you all for your help. And I really do thank the city staff that I got to work with and got to know. And then finally, my fellow councilmen, I want to thank you all. It's been a pleasure to work with you. And it certainly teaches a lot of life lessons about working together, disagreeing sometimes, but coming together to get things done as a group. So anyway, thank you to all the city council and city manager. So thank you much.
Municipal election results.
The canvas of ballots for the municipal election of April 2nd, 2024 was performed by County Clerk Terry Maddox and the verification board. For council three-year term, County Clerk Maddox certified that the canvas for Moberly Councilman is as follows. David Lynn received 250 votes, Chuck McEwen received 393 votes, and Sarah Barfield Graff received 292 votes. The certification shows Chuck McEwen and Sarah Barfield Graff are elected for Moberly Councilman for three-year terms at the municipal election of April 2nd, 2024.
Appointment of a temporary chairman.
Okay, consideration of motion to adjourn, sign a dye. Appointment of a temporary chairman to preside over the meeting until the mayor is elected. I ask for a motion to appoint Michael Bogowski as temporary chair to preside over the meeting until the mayor is elected.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Bogowski presides now.
Thank you.
Can we get to exit, right?
I will now perform the oath of office. Chuck McEwen, if you could please step forward. Please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of city council, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the class to which the city of Moberly belongs, and the ordinances of the city, and faithfully perform the duties of my office. Congratulations. Sarah Barfield Graff. Please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of city council, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the class to which the city of Moberly belongs, and the ordinances of the city, and faithfully perform the duties of my office. Congratulations.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order again. Roll call.
Lucas?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Kimmons?
Here.
McEwen?
Here.
Graff?
Here.
I would now open the floor for nominations for mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Brandon Lucas as mayor.
There's been a nomination by Councilman Kimmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaiser. Any other nominations for mayor? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and take a vote. There's been a motion and a second for Councilman Lucas to become mayor. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Brandon is elected mayor. I would pass the gavel on to the mayor.
Thank you. They left the keys to the house. Watch out now. So at this time, we need to elect a mayor pro tem. So at this time, I would accept any nominations for mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Kimmons as mayor pro tem.
We do have a nomination. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for mayor pro tem. All in favor signify by aye.
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 All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Kimmons, mayor pro tem. Okay, moving forward. Mr. Bogowski, are there any visitors that you'd like to recognize this evening at the meeting?
Not this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove for discussion? None? Hearing none, is there a motion to read the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Bill number R 1626, a resolution establishing a police cadet employment program and agreement. Bill number R 1627, a resolution ratifying payment to Cummins, Inc. for emergency repair of the wastewater treatment plant generator. And bill number R 1628, a resolution accepting the proposal of Walker Consultants to relieve downtown traffic congestion and to partially implement said proposal.
Is there any further discussion regarding the consent agenda? No questions? I'll undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
The second. All in favor to approve the consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Okay, ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution authorizing payment to Schneider's Excavating Co- Company for work on the Moberly Downtown C S O storage. As we read once for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of, ah, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? First and only reading, please.
A resolution authorizing payment of $268,184.70 to Schneider's Excavating Company for work on the Moberly Downtown C S O storage facility project.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has passed. Number 13, a resolution.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between March 29th, 2024 and April 11th, 2024 in the amount of $526,546.67.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between March 29th, 2024 and April 11th, 2024 in the amount of $526,546.67.
I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Matthew P. Douglas. Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution has passed. Next on the list, we have official reports from the department heads. They submit these to us monthly and we have a chance to read through and ask questions. I assume everyone has gotten those. So does anybody have any particular questions for the department heads? Mr. Kaiser?
I believe this falls under utilities, so I'm addressing this to Steve, but if Tom's involved, it goes to you as well. I just want to commend you for the projects that's going on over here by the municipal auditorium. It's been a lot of fun watching that go into place. And I know it's caught a lot of attention with people that they stop me and ask me and say they're paying attention when there's workers there or when they're not. And I just want to commend your department and the people that are doing the work because it's been fun to watch, so.
Any other questions?
I had a question for Matt. Regarding, in the report, it did say that we did have to pull some emergency funds for the utility department, but I couldn't figure out why we had had to pull those emergency funds. Did that have to do with the payment at the lagoon or?
So we had budgeted at the beginning of this fiscal year for the bonds that were, that matured as of January. That that, there's a bond reserve fund that D N R makes us have. It was approximately $1.7 million sitting there. And so that is utilities money to use. And so in the budget, there is a budget transfer from that. We understood that with all the projects going on and all the capital outlay that we've had, and especially with the issues we've had with additional sewer maintenance throughout the spring, that we would go at some point exhaust that utilities reserve. In essence, that utilities reserve fund is the profit and loss or the retained earnings of the utilities fund. And so it went negative by $33,000 to make that transfer. We've already received payments this month that are going to push that reserve fund well into the, into the positive again. But we have expected that that, that fund will be extinguished and will probably move that money from that bond reserve fund into the reserve fund in the future.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'm just looking for an explanation on that. Any other questions for monthly reports from the department heads? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone else here to address the council? If so, please step forward. Present your card to the clerk and state your name and address for the record. You will have exactly four minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
It's very fun that you can be able to say, "Mr. Mayor," to one of my former students. And that several of you who are here are my former students. It's fun to have. And I congratulate the new members of the council too. I really appreciate you stepping up and serving and I like seeing new younger faces here too. It's very nice. I would just like to ask that we establish some kind of a traffic study to develop some plans for what we can do. I'm excited about the fact that we've, we've got traffic problems in town. This is, oh, it's great, but the problem is it is difficult to get around, particularly in the south part of town. We've got new subdivisions on South Williams. We've got new subdivisions off of Morley. The house is just going up right left. The, the new Dollar General out there, which only has one entrance onto Morley. Morley is a mess and M is a mess with the pavement itself. And I realize that both of those are really under the governance of MoDOT. But I think that we've got to find a way. We can't just wait for MoDOT to do it all. I know Columbia has done some things where they've made agreements with MoDOT on things like Providence and Stadium and those kinds of things. So I think we're going to have to do some of those kinds of things to maybe even a roundabout for Moberly. And I would offer my services if you decide you're going to do some kind of a commission or citizen study of it or something. I'd be glad to help with that. But I think it's time to do it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom, or Mr. Bogowski, would you like to add anything to that?
I would, I don't know if you're aware or not, but we do have a cost share agreement with MoDOT to, and we're, design is being completed right now. That's where the city's contributing $1.5 billion towards that. It's a, for a $3 million project to do a widening and infrastructure improvements between Burkhardt and Carpenter Street. And so we've also approached them. I'm on the TAC committee. And we've pushed and gotten, through a lot of efforts have gotten the intersection of Route M and Morley moved to the top. It's a tier one level project now, unfunded needs list, but you know, as funding becomes around and also I know that some representatives have pushed to try to get funding pulled specifically for that project. So it's, it's on their high priority list for them. And but like I say, we've, we've already contributed $1.5 million. That's all we had to save for years to get that kind of money pulled aside of our street programs, so.
Sounds good. Sounds like. And also too, maybe some more effort on that south fire station that we talked about back when I was on the council in 2009 and we own that property on South Morley. Whether we want to do it there or not, I don't know, but I do think it's, it's getting to be time to have a third fire station in town.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for your concerns. We appreciate you coming forward and always invite anyone to do so. Is there anyone else that would like to come before the council and make any comments? Hearing none. Is there anything else to come for current work session or current session? None? Okay, I will address a motion to adjourn to work session followed by a closed session to discuss matters, personnel matters.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff? Graff.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up our current work session. All right, number one. Resolution authorizing, offering and selling four city vehicles on Purple Wave. Mr. Bogowski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We wanted to bring this to your attention. As most of you know, and for the benefit of our newer members, we have an agreement with Enterprise, the rental car company, to do fleet management for us. And part of the program is they consort vehicles, they lease them to us. And then when the lease is up, they resell them into the market. Well, what we have noticed is we're having a difficult time getting sale prices from Enterprise that really match what we feel are the value of these vehicles. And part of that is really not their fault at all. They're paying wholesale prices to us. But we have access to a company called Purple Wave, which we have successfully sold on for many years. And we just feel these vehicles, we really could maximize their value by selling direct to consumer on Purple Wave. So we're bringing this today to work session to tell you about our overall recommended change in strategy here and get your thoughts on that moving forward. And if this is agreeable to you in the future, when we're disposing of this much city property, we would just take it direct to regular session at that point. Sometimes at these auctions that, there's timeframes that you have to submit your information by, so just to speed up the process. But wanted you all to have the opportunity to discuss this and make sure you agreed with our recommended strategy on this.
Any questions? The one question that I had is, is there any penalty by not trading the vehicle into Enterprise?
No, we asked them that specific question. And we can take money from Purple Wave and credit it towards the next lease. So there is no, there's no fine or penalty. And you still can have the same benefit as if you had sold through them. You can buy down the next lease, so.
Very good. Okay, if we don't have any other questions, are there any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, we'll move that forward to the next council meeting. Number two, Robertson Road Crossing Agreement. Mr. Sanders.
This is part of an industrial park project where Robertson Road would be extended north from Fowler Road over to McEwen Parkway and Fowler Road over there. So where we cross, there's a piece of inactive track. But it's still, they, it's not usable to meet their standards. But they, railroad does not want to release that or say that we may never use that again. And it also connects directly to our spur that we own that is also unusable to meet the current guidelines. To rebuild that, and I've met with, they still have a lease agreement with Natural Crush to use those tracks. But part of that was said that they had to maintain them in usable condition, which they haven't been. I've met with them and I said they aren't, don't meet specifications. We need to terminate this lease with you. And they were agreeable with that. I'm trying to get the railroad and them connected. The railroad wants to hear that as well. But overall, they have sent us this crossing agreement that you see in front of you, which would say that in the event that they ever want to open those tracks back up where they're at, that, you know, that the city would pay for the replacement of that intersection through there. However, to meet their new guidelines, it's a much larger arc that would actually miss this section of right of way. So if it's ever reconstructed, it wouldn't go through what we're agreeing to anyhow. So I don't see any future potential for that track to be put back to that location.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Is there any downside that you could think of by making this move? Is there, I mean, I can see the positives, but is there any downside where maybe we regret this in the future?
You know, in the event that there was something that came back in there and they wanted to extend this track straight to the, on past the biodiesel facility down the road sometime, you know, if something like that happens, the potential for a large company that would be, move the needle to build a multi-million dollar section of rail would also have some CDBG or their EDA or other type of fundings that we could probably leverage to get some kind of support to see those rails. Because they would have to do all the improvements to their rails as well. The little crossing piece is a drop in the bucket.
Very good. Any additional questions? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, please move this forward. Number three, receipt of proposal for infill housing at 1204 Quinn Street. Mr. Sanders.
So again, vacant lot and local builder has submitted a plan for that. And would like to move forward to get those in. He has built some other infill houses. And, you know, we've been communicating with him closely. So what we're needing to get done there, so ask him to move it forward, get another infill house in place.
Any questions? Concerns? Hearing none, any objections to moving this forward?
No.
Okay, please move this forward to the next meeting. And number four, a resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records. Mrs. Hans.
The city of Mobley follows the state of Missouri's records retention guidelines as required by the Secretary of State. And the city of Mobley's Parks and Recreation Department has determined that certain records no longer have administrative, legal, fiscal, research, or historical value. And these records are listed in the Missouri Records Manual. The minimum retention period has been exceeded. And it's recommended that the city council forward this item onto the next regular session and adopt a resolution to allow staff to commence with the destruction of those records per the established guidelines. And the city of Mobley shreds those records after the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Hans? Hearing none, any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Okay, please move that forward. Is there anything else to come before the work session? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. To close session.